You guys hear me? I can't hear anybody.
Michael, can you say something?
Hello there. How's everybody?
Okay.
But he's an only observer, is that correct?
Yes, Michael.
And so he's a non-audience. Yes, not during the deliberations, okay.
Yeah, I can speak out anytime I want to.
Oh, Michael.
Thank you.
Keep pushing the button.
Lots of people.
All right, I'd like to call this meeting to order. We'll start with that. I called the order and then we'll start with the roll call. Butler.
Here.
Brown.
Here.
Helmrich.
Here.
Eily.
Here.
Stanis.
Here.
Webster.
Here.
And then Worth, who is observing via Zoom. Thanks for observing, Mike. You bet. Okay, next we'll go on to approval of the agenda. Oh, I'm sorry. Yes. Thank you. Okay, so now on to the approval of the agenda. Anybody have any thoughts on the agenda or comments?
Change in new business is to go to B as A bylaws update, and then commission sharing related topics is B. That be approved, all right?
Is that your motion?
No, it's just making that recommendation there. Bylaw A and commission sharing to B.
I'm okay with that. Anybody have any problems with that? Right? Anybody?
Move to approve the agenda as amended.
Right, roll call. Butler. Brown.
Here.
Helmrich. Eily. Yes. Stanis.
Yes.
Webster.
Yes.
Okay, now we'll move on to public comment. Oh. I'm getting way. All right, so now we'll move on to approval of the minutes from September 26 and 22. So we'll start with page one. Any comments on page one?
Only comment that I have is the Zoom instructions. Since we don't, unless we're going to make that a common discussion, we did not discuss that at the September 26th. That was not part of it. But whether than that, we need to do something. I think that needs to be discussed and whether it becomes a regular discussion of minutes, in the minutes. Since we have a public who joins us on Zoom.
Yeah, I don't think we need the instructions down there, but we could note that, and also present, there were, you know, members of the public. Verity is, you know.
Okay. And whether we should consider the Zoom instructions as part of the agenda. So if that goes out in regards to the, should that be part, so the individuals who look at the agenda, they understand that they, because we do do the link, that this is how we run it in regards to Zoom.
I don't think the instructions should be in the minutes.
Correct, I'm just saying.
And, you know, this is a holdover from when we met on Zoom.
Right.
It's also, in the agenda itself, we still have down name and location for call to order.
Yeah.
That's over. So, yeah, I think we should update that.
In terms of the instructions, Morgan put some in the chat.
Okay.
Yeah, okay. I think that's a good point.
So we can just remove that altogether?
Yes.
The Zoom instructions. Okay.
On the end of page one, it says the following was under, and then we go to page two. Do we need that statement?
Probably not.
Okay, I would suggest we strike that. In his speed, I'm like, okay, I haven't looked that up.
All right.
Or is it stat? I think it's stat.
Okay. Okay, moving on to page two.
In that first paragraph, I think it should read Wells reviewed the application and provided an overview on the submitted conceptual plans, because there was no site plan submitted per se, there were conceptual.
Right. All right, on to page three.
Oh, I have one thing on page two, sorry. Let's see, down to commission member discussion. There's the Butler, the Helmrich, the Worth paragraph, further along that line after however, stated he was no in favor, I believe it's not.
I do have a question, and it doesn't, I'm not sure if it reads right, if we go back to public comment. It's under the comment that resident Green talked about. She's voice concerned regarding traffic, light, and noise pollution, and how well thought out the plan was. And then she felt that more thought and planning needed to be made. I'm a little confused with that. First we say it's not thought out well, and then more thought and planning needed to be made. So I think that's in conflict, I mean, at least I read it that is. It's like, okay, is it well thought out or is it not well thought out?
Maybe it should just be regarding traffic, light, and noise pollution period. And on to the next comment.
Yeah, so again, I'm not sure how that was taken from the actual recording. So I don't know if that could be it. Unless everybody else.
No, I think it wasn't that that she was saying that the plan was well thought out. She was questioning whether it was thought out. Based on the traffic.
So there's a.
Maybe a question mark after it was, I don't know.
Yes, that probably will be more appropriate. And how well the plan was, was, you know, I don't know, just seemed not quite right.
We're good with a question mark?
Yes. Yeah. I would give a question mark there.
Any other comments on page two? All right, page three. You're none?
Move to approve the minutes as amended.
Page four, I wouldn't imagine, but.
Oh, I'm sorry. Move to approve the minutes as amended.
All right, roll call.
Get this via voice, though?
I guess we can. All those in favor? Okay, next is, now we're on to public comment. So the planning commission requests the speakers respect the three-minute time limit for individuals and the five-minute time limit for individuals speaking on behalf of a group. So that means that if you're here speaking on behalf of whatever, so this is a public comment period where you can comment on anything that's on your mind. There's, it doesn't have to be tied to anything specifically on the agenda. However, I would like everyone to know here in the audience that the old business today, item number six on the agenda, there is no public comment period for that item. So if you're here to speak out or make comments for that project, now's your time to do it. And you have, if you're speaking out as an individual and not for a group, you have three minutes to speak. Please kindly hold to that time limit. If you are, are you here with a group and you're speaking for that group, then you have five minutes to speak. So and if you can completely, or please adhere to that time. And then, actually, I'll I'm gonna call everybody by row. I just asked, so. So we can't speak to the old business? No, absolutely you can. Okay, yes. I guess what I'm trying to say is I suspect why most people are here, but I don't know why everybody's here. So I just wanted to be known that you can speak to whatever you are here for. So it doesn't have to be regarding new business, old business, anything on the agenda particular. So, yes.
Just to clarify.
Yes.
There will not be any public comment before old business.
This is your time right now.
So.
There is no public comment during the old business section of the, under item number six, old business A. There is no public comment period. That expired as of last meeting. So it was open to public comment last meeting. And then once public comment closed, it's closed. So if you would like to speak to it, this is the time. So having said that, I will open up public comment and I will call it by, go row by row by row. So, and as you come up to the microphone, please introduce yourself, your name, and your address, and, you know, and I think that's it. And then speak clearly, and like I said, three minutes or five minutes. So, row number one. Row number two. Or number three.
Hello, my name's Ed Beckman. I live at 3041 Lake Door Drive. I'm here to speak on the parcel of the brewery. And I wanted to say that I know the developers of this project. I know them to be men of integrity. I know that they have a strong commitment to the area. I think that this would be an asset to the community. And I think especially for a family-friendly place for people to go in this community, I think there's a real need for it. And thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anyone else from row number three? Okay, row number four. Yes.
Good evening. My name's Jennifer Johnson. I live at 408 Park Drive. And I'd like to echo what the gentleman spoke prior to me said. I was here at the presentation on September 26th. I was really curious about what this plan entailed. And I have to say, I think I really wanted to speak to the added value that this brings to our community. I think there was a lot of concerns, and I think there's time to look through the concerns and to get clarity and to understand how this is all gonna look. But to have a person who grew up in the town, who has this very specific skill set and experience running successful businesses, who is here with his family, building something in this town that has the potential to be a true landmark and family-friendly venue that isn't in town, which I think is really key. I think the location presents a lot of problems and issues and concern. The location is really important to the people that live here year-round, that have young kids and want a place to come to with their friends and their kids to have good food. You know, that's really good food and some beer and just kind of have that sense of community. So I just wanted to, you know, kind of put the focus on the value that this brings. It's a true opportunity to have a really nice landmark spot coming off of the highway for people coming into town and for people in town to enjoy with their families and friends. So I hope you'll consider that as well as you're hearing all the plans and presentations. Thank you.
Anyone else from row four?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Thank you. I just wanted to add just a couple more comments. My name's Tisha Johnson. I live at 408 Park Drive. And the other thing that I think is really wonderful about this particular process is that because there's a request that causes us to have an opportunity to really understand what this business is about and what the proposal itself is, then we're able to see into who the person and people are that will be establishing this business. And what we're hearing is obviously the real concern for, and really actually love for this community. So that brings something in that really is meaningful, family-oriented. And when I drive up and down Blue Star, I think about a lot of businesses that a few years ago we would ever have expected to be in this community. But here they are. In this case, we know that the intention is fully for the connection back to this community, which is pretty awesome. Now, there's definitely things to vet. And that stuff is obviously worth the investment for all of us, actually, to make sure that we can make it the best establishment possible. But I know there's so much goodwill around it. So I really think that's, we're in an unusual circumstance where we get to understand what the intent here is, and we can see it's really good. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Rock and Jessica Russet of 3279 Lowermark Lane. We both wanted to speak in support of the brewery as well. I don't know if any of you have ever been up to Dustin, where they have the back lot. And it is a wonderful place for families to go. There are four or five small venues. And the kids can, if the kids want grilled cheese, they can go here. Someone wants seafood, they can go here, and it's just, it's comfortable. And it is such a great place to just relax as friends with a larger group. And that's something, Saugatuck has some amazing venues for food. There's great places to eat. But there's not a ton of great places for families or for, if you wanna get together with another couple.
We have a young family, and we also are both coaches within the community rec programs. And when sporting events are done, there's not a lot of places that you can take a large group, and especially a large group of children and people that really wanna stay in our community and be a part of it and just have community with each other when you have young families. There's not a lot of space for that downtown parking, all of those things. And so we were just really excited to hear about this concept as families hoping to have that kind of experience and as well as coaches within the community.
So we all just hope you consider it.
Thank you.
Anyone else from row five? Or was that?
Do a step in front.
No, no, you're fine.
Nancy Brown, 6503 Sanctuary Trail. I expected to be able to speak before the old business, so I'll try to be brief. It's been brought to my attention that because of proximity of my residents and those in my neighborhood, this proposed development on item 7A at the September 26th meeting, formal advance notice should be provided to both of us in the neighborhood. I'd like to have clarification as to why this did not occur. And that does not happen to have to happen tonight. You'd address the minutes that, addressed words that I said at the last meeting, and they were paraphrased and ignored in the minutes, pretty much my major concern, which was the safety issue of Blue Star and the intersection where this development is going to go. That was lumped into lighting and sound amplification and such. But that was my primary concern, and I felt that was totally skimmed. I noticed that in the packet for this evening, item five, under agenda for public hearings, reads, if you have something to add, once you're seated, and this does happen, you are welcome to briefly add a comment once everyone in the audience has had an opportunity to speak, if first recognized by the chairperson. At the meeting I attended on the 26th, we were directed in the audience by the chairperson that there would be no additional comments after the public comment prior to the agenda item. With regards to this potential Blue Brewery, I am not opposed to it in theory. I have grave concerns about the traffic on Blue Star and a development going in without addressing those concerns. And I think everybody here has concerns about Blue Star traffic, and particularly the intersection where there are five or six streets going, and one cannot even comfortably cross the street with your bike or a grandchild in tow. Additionally, I reviewed the new proposals and see that the music will be redirected elsewhere, which is a good thing instead of just straight across the street. However, it says that it will be there till nine o'clock on Fridays, Saturdays, and Sundays. I question why it's necessary to have amplified music on a Sunday evening. I don't think that the majority of patrons that are going there for the activities will be there on a Sunday evening. And I would think that the music could be turned off earlier in the evening. And I probably have exceeded my tongue. It's not that I'm objective to this project. It could potentially be a wonderful asset. But I feel that we're putting commerce in front of safety. And until some of these concerns that we have about Blue Star and what's happening in this stretch of the road, where the speed limit is 50 miles an hour from the Burger King until you get to the curve, is inviting potential serious problems. Thank you.
You. I think we're to row five. Anyone else? Is there a row six?
How do you do? I'm John Tully. I live at 6429 Destin Court. And I just wanted to say that I've known Dave and Lobby, the proposed owners of this business for a while. I know their track record of success, and I think that speaks well to their proposal here. And I also wanted to say again that, you know, they are of this community and from this community. And, but we have lots of good businesses here that have come from, say, Grand Rapids or other areas, and those are wonderful. This is something that is actually of our community. And it's gonna be reflective of our community and reflective of our values and the kind of people who live here. So I'm really excited to go in, just like Rock and Jess, I have young kids as well. And I'm very excited to bring them to a place like this, so.
Thank you. Is there anyone left in the audience that would like to speak? No? I'll turn to Zoom. Is there any, I don't know how many people we have on Zoom. I don't like Sarah.
Yep, I. May I speak?
Yes, you may.
Okay, Mike Worth, 3355 Gaslight Lane, Saugatuck Township. I've read over the material quite thoroughly and in concept again. I think it's a, sounds like a great business proposition. I know everybody feels that they wouldn't really enjoy the venue. However, I find that it's kind of disturbing that no one except this one lady who just spoke was concerned about the safety of both the residents and the visitors to our area from out of town during season are concerned about safety. I find that having this establishment open, serving alcohol throughout the day into the evening at a very busy part of Blue Star Highway is a concern. And I think it can be addressed if it was done carefully. So my suggestion is that whoever is going to be responsible for, and I think it's the highway department, responsible for entrance and egress out of the property, consider very carefully the entrance design and the egress design of all the people. It sounds like it's gonna be very successful. All the traffic going in and out of that establishment at all hours of the day be taken into account very, very carefully. One suggestion I have, just as a resident, is that maybe the entrance is on Blue Star, but the egress is on 135th Street. To, but it has to be very carefully managed, because people coming in and coming out with the volume of business that this establishment will generate, which is great, has to be very carefully managed, because you've got bicyclists, people crossing the street and a 50 mile an hour speed limit, which is crazy. And we just need to be very careful of that whole situation, work with the highway department to work out the nine of the access to this. That's it. Thanks.
Okay, thank you, Mike. Is there anyone else? You know, we got Zoom, it's the audience. Okay, at this point, I'd like to close up public comment. I would like to add just one thing. I know there was at least one concern that I heard about notification of any, really any projects that's going on in the community. And actually, John can probably speak a little bit better than I can about it. But there is a, the township sends emails. If you subscribe to our, I don't know how you word it, they subscribe to a newsletter from the township, it'll show up in your email box, and you will get, is it monthly?
Well, is it? I'll just. Yeah. We started this when this board took office. It's an e-blast that goes out before every planning commission meeting, every board meeting with the full packet. Everything is listed. We also do them from time to time, like if the office is gonna be closed or to promote one of the recycling events. And we got it to a much stronger state. I'm gonna thank Morgan for this, in terms of how they look and the frequency. Because we wanna communicate. You can sign up for this. We just, I think, we almost hit 500. That's a lot. What's that? 502.
So now, how do they?
2,900 residents.
How do they sign up for it?
It's so easy. You go to info@saugatucktownship.org and say, sign me up. Here's my email address. It's on every tax bill. Now, if you have Morgan Jessica, you don't get the tax notice. But we've been trying to push people. And you can even. And you can even just call in and ask for more of it, but we'd really like to see that five hundred become a thousand fifteen hundreds. Because we want you to know what's going on. Now, obviously with these kind of issues, there are written notices sent to people within, what's it, three hundred?
Yeah, yeah, I was just gonna say like.
Yeah.
We have the record of posting and publication, but the notice was sent to all properties within three hundred feet. It, it, the notice was in, it's the same notice that went out for Auto Camp, which is another project that was pulled from that September agenda. It's the third item in a list. It might be that people missed the third item. Maybe they just read the Auto Camp request and didn't get to the brewery. I really don't know. But in fact, this notice probably went to more people than, than what if it was the only thing on the agenda? Because it also went to all the people that were around the Auto Camp parcels. Which are all around the same vicinity here, so it, it was sent to.
But I will say that we are very, I'm sorry, the public comment period.
So the notices, we have three required ways of noticing. I'll just go real quick. Okay. Um, when there is an action that requires a public hearing notice, a rezoning, a special use. Those go to all properties within three hundred feet of the, of the request. We also post it on the outside of the building, on the website, and we send it to the newspaper. And it's required to be in the newspaper at least fifteen days prior to the meeting. And that can be the newspaper of general circulation. We can pick the Sentinel. We could pick the, the commercial record. It's up to us to decide.
And again, if you go to info at sagatucktownship.org, you'll get a personalized email with the whole packet. Once it's ready, so I encourage everyone to do that. Thanks for listening.
And I, and I think I speak for everyone sitting up here is, we do appreciate when you come in and tell us in person how you feel. And give us your comments about it because that way we know people are paying attention, people are involved and, you know, it's kind of how a community works. So, so thank you. All right, moving on to old business. At this point, I, I have to recuse myself because although I'm not the developer, but I do own the property that the developer is. Is looking to build on, so I am going to step aside and hand the gavel over to Ms. Webster. And just wait for you guys to come. We'll see you later. Thank you.
Thank you, Dave.
Thanks.
Okay, on our agenda, this is old business. The request is especially approval use for uses similar to C one general commercial district. Proposed brewery at sixty-five, twenty-five Blue Star Highway. The applicant is Dave Rodriguez and just, and the agent is Holland Engineering. Just to remind the audience that this is a continuation of our discussion from last once meeting. And this is not a public hearing, it's really a discussion in regards to any issues that the planning commission wishes to address. Special land use. So with that. Commissioners. Your thoughts? I can go to the minutes and, and that may be a place that we can look in regard to, well, I actually, Lenny, is there anything? Yeah, we need.
Let's review the plan.
Is there anything more we need to add to, to what has already been presented to us?
There was a letter at your desk from Gary Eyley. So Gary is the landowner to the northeast where the two houses are that you had questions about. So not only in your packet was there a letter from Dave Irie. Explaining that those houses are vacant, but since that property is owned by Gary. He provided a letter also that states that he owns the property and he's okay with the uses proposed. The similar use proposed for that, so I wanted to alert you to that.
Um, so, and as I recall the concerns, one was the direction of the music and that has been addressed. One was the. The parking issue. Are you satisfied now that they have enough parking to?
So.
Fully operate this in a safe manner.
So I'm, I, I would say that. The property itself has ample space for power. I think the question is where that parking is located, how it's configured and the.
Is that something we were doing site plan?
Yeah, I guess that was my point is that I, I think we've proved that the use and the parcel concerning this use can accommodate the required parking. I think what needs to happen between, if this were to move forward for the uses similar during site plan conversations. And maybe working with the applicant is how do we modify some of that parking? Because we do have an interest in, you know, some of that, there's at least one or two trees. They're outside the buffer area, but they're within the parking. There's some existing driveways and pavement that maybe could be taken advantage of in terms of the maneuvering. So. I think the parking can be accommodated, but it's just a question of where and how.
Okay. I'm trying to think, what were the other issues we had?
Fencing, which fencing is provided now.
Right.
We have the property lease agreements, stage placement, design.
Yeah.
Again, whether in fact there is a possible access to one thirty-five, I think that's still up for discussion. Even though that, again, the applicant hasn't shown that at this, at this point. But whether that is helpful with access management in regards to safety. I think that that is something that we will need to continue to discuss. We do have notices from the joining landowners that they understand what was happening within the land. Of course, the question from Gary Eyley is, and again, that may come back to parking is, is that going to be allowed for overflow parking? And how do we stop patrons going into that property when that's not part of the site plans? But again, that could be dealt with in regards to site plan.
I think, yeah, I think this is just basically now the content and I come back to the, the issue that. If spectators wanted to go into this site, we wouldn't be having this hearing because it's a permitted use.
If they can't go into somebody else's property, though.
No, 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 but I mean, but they, a bar could, they could, they could get into the bar. With the zoning that's in place. The reason that this is here is that it's. Not a bar format because of the open format. And as long as we address the sound issue. I, I don't see anything that would stop us from approving this. But bearing in mind that I would be very interested to see that discussion with the use of one thirty-fifth. And a possible discussion with the county about the speed limit. Because we have a number of businesses now on, on Blue Star and. Memorial, Memorial Day to Labor Day, to planning, special year in the life.
I think if there was to be like, again, later, if they were to look at shared parking or some of the parking on adjacent properties. I don't see that that would require the use of a brewery be allowed on those adjacent because, properties. Because parking is customary and an accessory use in C one anyway.
And I think there's actually been quite a bit of information provided already just for a special use approval. And we're not reviewing a site plan tonight. We're reviewing this for a special use approval.
We can beat them up all over again.
Pardon me?
We get to beat them up all over again.
I just don't see that. I think we're forgetting what is we're looking at here. Because a site plan will be approved when it meets all the requirements. Right now, we're just trying to approve the special use and a commercial here.
Um, I guess, Lenny, if we were to look at approving this, is there anything that you would add as a condition?
So in the report, the first condition would be that a detailed site plan be submitted. You know, that the use itself isn't approved until we do, we get that detailed site plan. Um, so. That is to say, we're, we, we would say that, yep, this is a similar use, but we still have a stop, right?
Yes.
Um, that the detailed site plan meet the requirements of the groundwater overlay. I mean, that's. That there's no outdoor storage. That they adhere to our. Tree buffering, buffer areas. We did include this about getting a cross access easement and that.
May, could you explain what that is?
Yeah.
What do you mean by that?
And that could be talked about even at the site plan stage, but. So cross access agreements would mean that traffic and vehicles who are using the brewery and going to the brewery. Would have the right to traverse this, well, I should say, people going to the car repair. Have the right to traverse this site to get to the car repair and vice versa. So there would be kind of a, a parallel linear, almost like a frontage. Where those, there's agreements that those cars and access can move back and forth. If ownership were to change at the north or the south, that easement and agreement to pass through would run with the land. So the thought is that could we get a cross access easement across the front, across Blue Star? So that when and if these other adjacent properties develop, there can be that with a bit of cars. And also get it perhaps along. A hundred and thirty-fifth, because these are long parcels. It may be that someday they're divided. And the fronts of some of these are, are at one thirty-five. And, and then the back where the other front is on Blue Star. And so I think you would want that same cross access along a hundred and thirty fifth.
Okay, Lenny, can I ask a question in regards to the comment that was made by engineering? The engineer, access to the brewery, and I'm reading this from his first page of September twentieth, twenty twenty-two. Access to the brewery is prone to share the existing two hundred and thirty foot wide paved driveway with the adjacent repair shop. This non-conforming driveway is not an ideal layout for vehicle movements and or shared use path that runs on the right away. Will that be in conflict with your easement, your cross, that your suggestion?
No, I think that cross access easement would help facilitate. A future driveway configuration perhaps for all three of these parcels. Maybe it's one driveway and it works for all three. Or the two hundred foot one that they have now is narrowed and there's an actual throat.
Yes, but, yes. Because again, I, as, as a person who walks that pathway and rides that pathway, that is extremely dangerous.
So the goal, I think.
When you have all these vehicles coming in, for sure.
It's dangerous as soon as you turn on, you know, you go, you can lose your life at Burger King, same, same.
Yeah, but there's only one driveway. I only have the transverse one driveway at a time. And, and that's a lot. It's the same with the dairy days. That's dangerous. You know, if you're really looking for someone who uses that pathway, we want, and they want to encourage people to use that pathway. That can be dangerous. So again, this is something, I'm not saying that, that this is not the appropriate use and so forth. But we look at the detail and for the applicant, I think we need to be very aware of that in regards to the safety of the people using that pathway. Especially if they want to encourage that.
And I think we need to be a partner with the road commission. Because it might be that in their book, they open it, each parcel has a driveway. Instead, it might be that we need to be, share with them the minutes and the conversations that are had around this table. That really, if there's a way to share drives, if there's a way to kind of reconfigure and make it safer, that would be preferred versus yet another curb.
Yes, I, I would, I don't, I don't disagree. Okay, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Those conditions, yeah, so I mean, there was just the regular conditions right about. Yeah, getting applicable permits, no ground disturbance until the detailed site plan is approved. So you can't go in and start cutting trees. And that the use comply with all the conditions that the applicant set for themselves. And that are represented in their testimony and in their application.
You had also mentioned in your notes, perhaps a marked spur from the trail to the site shall be considered. And separate from vehicle movement. I think this is for bicycling.
Yeah.
Pedestrian.
Yes, so as I was imagining this, as a, as someone walking the trailer on the bicycle. The way into this brewery is using that same driveway opening, that same throat, you know, the drive. And not that, that. That we would want more impervious surface and, and, and I know that the site has constrained because of existing conditions. But it might be that a, a more direct bicycle and trail connection to the front. That's not mixing with the driveway traffic would be.
It's a good idea.
Is there? So that could be something you could add as a condition. They can figure out how to do it later.
Yes. There was one question I asked, if I may ask the applicant, and it mentions about in your, in your conceptual is. Food service providers work potentially like food trucks. Where do you see that the food trucks are going to be entering your fenced area? That you have that all fenced in your conceptual plan. Where is it that we're going to be parking these food trucks and how are they going to, what's your plan to access that? Can I ask the applicant that question? Because I don't see that, how that, how that.
Here, but. In the future, if we do want to have food trucks, they'll probably be stationary. But we're, our concept isn't really going to have food trucks. It's going to be modular kitchens which are stationary and fenced in. In compliant with.
And I understand that from that, but again, I see that in your application that you keep mentioning food trucks and like, I don't, I don't understand where that's going to be. And how they're going to access that because you have a fence. I don't, I didn't.
It's stationary.
Okay, does the school bus?
The school bus is just something that's on our property and I drew it in the model. I don't know what we're going to do with that. It moved back.
Thanks. Thank you. All right, so therefore we see all the conditions and support. Do you have any, any other issues the commissioners wish to bring forward in regards to this special land use? Not.
I have a question first, just for clarification on the potential motions. They say site plan and special, aren't we just doing special approvals today?
Yeah.
So, um, thank you. I would just verify that. Technically, our ordinance says a special approval use is accompanied by the site plan. So. Our new ordinance will have like a conceptual and then a detailed site plan, but this is more just a concept plan.
So therefore we should add that as part of this, that we review the application in this conceptual site plan. And that, and the applicant really understands our issues as it comes forward in detail.
I think, and I think that's what Lenny said, the first thing she said, first condition of the special group use. Is that they have to come back so as to a detailed site plan.
Right, but if you look at the motion, I would add conceptual.
Yeah.
In front of the site plan. So you're going to be there.
Oh, so keep, keep it in with conceptual.
Yeah, yeah, keep the site plan, because we do have a conceptual plan.
Well, or. I'll, I'll take a run out of your. Yeah, my question, maybe you're gonna, I just, I see twelve conditions here, which I think are very strong and like, that worked when they. Do we want to consider a thirteen for the driveway issues you just mentioned or are they? Do we want to consider a thirteen for the driveway issues you just mentioned, or are they covered by the driveway language we already have?
The access management, would that be under access management? And your sprint conditions?
Yeah, that's where I was handling that, um. The driveway. I don't know that we can. I, I mean, it is the road commission that's going to have the ultimate authority over the driveway placement. So I think it's going to be about the. The collaboration between the township and the applicant and the road commission.
So therefore, is that taking care of eight, all app, permits from the state county and local governments? The driveway access and so forth would be covered under eight because of that statement.
I mean, I guess the question is, could we require a shared driveway? Um. I don't know that, I mean, in a sense, it already is a shared drive, right? Because it would go to this use and the auto. Cause it's all paved today. Um.
How do we address that, as our engineer said, this non-conforming driveway? So wouldn't they have to make that conforming?
Yes.
So as we look at that statement. There are details with, uh. You know, again, all other entities coming in, it has to be a conforming driveway. On that parcel, is that correct? Cause we can't increase non-conforming.
No, we can't, um. I, I think they're going to have to get a permit from the road commission. So whatever that is, if the road commission is satisfied with. The driveway as is, or the driveway being shared or reconfigured driveway. We'll have to work.
And then again, we've, we've covered that under eight, if, under our conditions.
Eight, and then also getting the cross access so that perhaps if that property to the north. Your Gary Eyley property develops. You know. Having the cross access for wherever this is, we might be able to say, no new drive here. Actually close the drive, you know, you're using this drive.
Okay.
There's cross access.
That makes sense. All right, so. I think we've covered everything, Mr. Fisher Butler. If we have all.
I know it's going to get modified, but.
All twelve conditions are stated. And, uh, we can either repeat those conditions or.
Or you can reference.
We reference it in regards to, to this particular document from what a, uh, dated October eighteenth.
All right, I know you're probably.
Yeah.
A, a motion to approve the conceptual site plan and special approval use with the following conditions. We are moving, uh, to approve this special land use for six, five, two, five. Blue Star Highway inconsistent with the site plan standard to section forty dash six nine two and special land use standards of section four, six, nine, three. And forty dash seven, four, zero, with the following condition. Uh, there shall be a detailed site plan presented. These are my notes. Some of them are picked up with the twelve that I will reference in a minute. The compliance with the groundwater overlay, uh, no outdoor storage, tree buffering, cross use easement recorded in the chain of title. And, um. No ground disturbance until, um, the site plan and all other permits are obtained. And including the twelve items included by the recommendation from our planner.
That's dated October eighteenth, twenty twenty two. So they know what document.
That's what I, that's what I would love to say.
Okay.
Well done. But that's, that's my crack at a motion.
Okay, there is that a motion to support with, uh, all the conditions as stated within that document.
I'd like to support.
Okay, supported by Helming. Any other discussion? I will take a roll call vote associated with this motion. Uh, Mr. Butler.
Yeah.
Mr. Stanis.
Yes.
Mr. Hamling.
Hamlish.
Sorry.
Okay, yes.
Ms. Ground, yes, Ms. Wester, yes. We should pass it. And you understand everything that's associated with that and we're going to coming back to a detailed site plan.
Yes.
Okay.
And we should work with the road commission.
Yes, and all, uh, necessary other permits. Thank you.
Dave, yeah, it's someone you're not, oh, you know, I gotta make it stop, dude. This opportune moment.
In order. Okay.
I got to make sure of my.
You can have a bit of a bash.
Okay.
And you know. You can.
Okay, so moving on to, uh, item number seven, new business. Uh, we're going to start off with a bylaws update, uh, which we all received one in our package. And Ms. Israel's, our, uh, on chip clerk would like to, uh, speak to this.
Thank you. My name is Becky Israel, so I live at three, four, four, seven. Home drive, I didn't think about. Um, anyway, I, I do miss you all. That's the relationship thing here, but, um. I do want to talk to you just briefly, and I'll try to keep it very brief about the bylaws and rules of procedure that we all. Worked on collectively as a group, and then some of us worked individually on this. So, um. I do apologize too that it, I don't know if this is on, it's not, so I'll put it there. Um, I apologize that it took so long, but in talking to our attorney, it was misplaced by him and so. Um, he was very gracious in coming back and saying, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, but. Here you go. And he worked on it and it's, it's, um, actually a very good document. Um, a couple of things I want to say about it is, and even hearing things tonight is. This is a draft document that hasn't been adopted. So although it said. Things like, once you've spoken, you can come back and speak again. That was not in our original document. So that's something new. We haven't supported that or voted on it. You haven't. And eventually you can. Um, uh, I'm going to just go through some minor things that he said, um. You can call this bylaws or rules of procedure. It doesn't really matter to him. Um, in paragraph five point four, he addressed issues. Um, of the PC meeting. These are some things we asked about in meeting with, um. It's chapter five point four, actually, chapter five, and then kind of going down, but, um. It's conflict of interest. So if you want to whip over to chapter five on page seven. Uh, it does talk about conflict of interest and excusing yourself if there is a conflict of interest, which you did do tonight. Um, and you would have to do that if it's something owned by a planning commission member or being. Tooted as a planning commission project or owned, if you have a financial interest in it, you tend to gain financially from it. Or if it's a relative or an employer or employee. Note that, um, if you have something like that, you still have to have a quorum vote. In order to pass something like that. So he just really explained that better than what we had. Also in five point four, he talks about, um, or we talk about ex parte contact. With people and that wasn't explained well in our original document, but it does tell you. Um, that it's, it's a challenge if you meet with people ahead of time, because. If you do that, you tend to give them advice and that's not something we want to do. But it's very appropriate to go to a site. He said, it's just not appropriate to give advice to someone onsite about what you think the planning commission should do. Um. There is something in here about acceptance of gifts. I think we all know that. But I just will remind you, we can't take gifts from people. And, um, the other one is on procedural rules, five point four, item D. Is a reminder that free and open debate has to occur at these meetings. And not outside of the meeting. So one to one. Meeting with people and saying, how are you going to vote or what do you think? That's really not appropriate. The appropriate discussion is here. And I will just say, as chair of planning commission, I got a lot of calls always before every meeting saying. What do you think about this? Or how do you feel about that? I'd say, well, it's, explain your question. And then I'd say, I have a good question to bring up at the meeting. Cause we all need to know that. And if you're thinking it, the public's thinking it. So please. Please just respect that, that that's your job is to represent this public. And so, um, I encourage you to, to do that. As you know, that school board and everybody else has to do that. So. Um, anyway, um, and then item three there under five point four is. Um, from time to time, there may be a specific issue. And when I was chair and. I would get a call from, um, any of the press, I would refer them to Lene and Daniel, Lene or Daniel. Or whoever a manager was at the time. At the time, I really just referred him also to Lene, but. Daniel would also like to be one of those people. And so I think sometimes it's easier to not represent the group yourself, but just let one person speak for the group. Um. So, um, a couple of other things in contemplating passing this document tonight is. Um, and I'm just going to quickly review some things too. When I would go to your advisory committees. Often, um, you would say, oh, and we want to thank you for coming. But, um, under one point two, I am in, the, the chair is always an ex officio member of all advisory committee. And so please just understand that, because I kind of, I know when I was in that position, I always felt a little. Dumb by just saying, okay, yeah, you're welcome. Um, and as the chairperson, to remember you're responsible for correspondence. I know it's hidden in there. But thank you notes are appreciated to the public and to speakers. Don't send me a thank you note for explaining this, but. But it is a nice courtesy and it comes through the chair. So, um. Please know that, um, in one point five, we've added recording secretary to our document, which we didn't really. Have before. We talked, um, about that and added that role. That person is not a member, let's say. Um, and then, you know, the two point three. It's very important, the, the order. And so as long as you follow your order. You'll do well every time. And. Also always remember going over to page four, item five. But we did add, uh, well, if you have something to. Add, once you've been seated and every single person has had an opportunity to. Speak, it is up to the chairperson to recognize that someone may have something burning to say. In the audience and you can recognize that person and state you have thirty seconds. But at least you're giving people an opportunity, because as we all know, it's not an open discussion. Between the board and the audience at that point. So, um. And the only other, let's see, page five is just remembering to add the further discussion. After you have a motion, which did, I mean, and you do do, but. Um, often in meetings, people forget to do that, because I always forgot to add that. And John would always say. Do we have further discussions? So that was good. He would remind. Um, something our attorney added in section two, number I, and he felt was nine, I, page six. The planning commission has not taken an action on any matter unless it passes a motion. It wasn't in our document, but he was very implicit in saying it has to be in there. And, um. He did recommend talking to me verbally that when we talk about fiscal year and annual report. We might want to have our election, you might want to have your election on the fiscal year too. You might want to change that and or. Decide and put in your document when your election of officers and members. Will be, is it at the end of the year? It's in January or is it in July on your fiscal year? So that's something you might want to decide. Um. Um. Uh, the only other thing was a couple more things and I'm almost done. At the end of chapter six. I mentioned in my notes to him that Lene may add some language. Revive or regarding site visits and code enforcement. And so you can pass this document as it is and then revise it with the added language, or you can wait and ask Lene. If she would like to add some language regarding that now. And plus you can always update this, but. Um, that's one consideration. And he did take out the reference. We had a reference to Robert's Rules of Order. Eleventh edition, and he said, there are so many editions of Robert's Rules of Order. Take it out. He said, it used to be a standard in all, um, of. The procedures and bylaws that you referenced, Robert's rules. He said, once you reference it, it's outdated a month. So don't even bother. And, um. Uh. You know, that's all. I mean, just follow procedures and, you know. Recommends that the chair maintain order and recognize people and to speak and that's it. So thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions for me? Oh, but can I please thank, um, all of you for helping write this document and then for Jackie. Who came in for several hours and worked with me on it and Denise separately. So I, I really appreciate everyone's time and effort. I truly mean that. Thanks.
Well, I would like to give the, the planning commission's great thanks and gratitude to our former chair, Israel. For commandeering this, for making it happen. Yes, it's great. And I did want to mention, I'm glad you mentioned this towards the end, uh, on page one, under one point one officers. I believe the last four years or so, we've been operating under the assumption that we made the officer. Selections at the beginning of the calendar year. They've always been for a one-year term. That's how we've been operating. And then we kind of discovered that should be the fiscal year. So in the situation we're in now, we thought if we voted tonight or even in December on new officers, we were. Ahead of the game, but we're not. Fiscal year for the township starts July first. So we're actually behind. I think this language should stay in the bylaws. That's why election of officers is on the agenda.
So because this is a, a draft. Uh, this is something that we should really take a look at, uh, before next meeting. Now come back and discuss. And then we would be expected to make a recommendation at some point for approval to the board.
So you approve it, it does not require board approval.
Yes.
So, um. You can, you can put it on for adoption at the next meeting.
I think that would be sufficient.
I think that would be good. And if you wanted to add any, uh, uh, language as to your responsibility to do. Uh, highlight that this is my, my additional thoughts.
It says under duty to.
I was going to ask you if you felt. I was going to ask you if you felt compelled to be more explicit about the enforcement issues, as you know.
Yeah.
I think that'd be a good thing if you're so inclined.
And, and also is there a need to add something associated with uh, the new. Position that we have in regards to format, uh, important, um, city Austin. Is, is there something in the, that says, you know, that you can delegate. To her or that's part of her job and whether that's part of the duties as well. Uh, uh, since that's new.
It is, it's a brand, totally new position and it's full-time, it's never been full-time.
So that may be something you might want to consider, Linay, and how that fits into that. The only other thing is, I look at this briefly, is in regards to page seven. Talks about any planning and zoning education. You know, often many municipalities, at least the ones that I've been involved in. Require their, their planning commissioners to attend one training session per term. So again, if I'm up and. I go to a, something either is online or something that we require a training. Of our commissioners, and I think that we should think about that.
That's the next item on the agenda.
Well, well, that and, you know, whether it belongs in here as well.
Okay, but there is, you just cited reference in there. You say maybe more explicit perhaps?
Yes, E, or page seventeen, that if there is, this, this says that may attend, this is, no, we're going to say.
Let's say shall attend.
One trading session per.
I think.
Term. Again, something to consider.
I, I like that. And if you go to two or three in one year, are you off it?
Yeah, no.
Well, there should be online training.
Yeah, there is.
Videos, shots that are free.
They need to show, just like our board of review, we are required.
Right.
Uh, so.
That's a big law. Let's make it stronger, right?
If you're concerned or if you're getting to the end of your. Term or renewal. You can always contact me and I can send you some videos or things to.
They can always do more, but we have to do at least a minimum.
And the Michigan Association of Planners is happy to, to give us suggestions. That's a great point. Thank you.
Interesting, and in here somewhere, it does say that. Education for the planning commission. Um, would be approved. Your approval process would go through the manager and it would be set up by the clerk. Just, just as an FYI for you, if someone has to approve the education and he's the. The manager is responsible for the budget, so he would approve that. And um, it would be set up.
Yes, that's, that's on page seven E.
Okay.
It, it's already there, but what I'm saying is it says, shell planning. And I'm saying. No, a planning commissioner should go.
It's required.
Per term.
Will plan, will.
Okay, so it's going to be under E. I, I think that's the most appropriate place.
Okay.
This is a suggestion that you may not agree, but we can have a discussion on next one.
And you're right, with all the actual online training, it's really something that's very beautiful. And it'll make us better.
Yeah, I mean, it's also, if you want to come in and just meet with me for an hour and just say. Help me look at these site plans or what do you look at? You know, I mean, I don't think we're. I don't know that we're going to say, oh, you didn't go to an accredited, you know, training here, but.
I would disagree with that, Linay. And I would hope that if I have to say that I.
I think we should keep.
But having an official training that we can go to. Official training, uh, has been.
Training is budgeted. We've never used the amount budgeted. I don't see that. Communicate.
So then the way the process would work is. Really, the recommendations could be passed on by Linay, or really, I guess, by. By night, by the chair. And then, uh, then it goes to Daniel. And uh, or the core of the managers at the time, that's, it's approved by Daniel and then. It's would then be. Uh, scheduled and we'd be signed up by the clerk. Is that correct?
You know.
Yeah, can I just?
Can they just say, because you're a board and you all work together, you have, um. You have a conference coming up and you said, let's send three or four of us to this conference. You guys are going to discuss that. The request for funding goes to Dan. Really?
I mean, I think we could just say staff, because I know what's in the budget and I track that.
He, he was specific in saying he wanted it to go to him. So that's the only thing I'm going to add.
We can look at that paragraph.
But you decided.
And treasure both can be, got that access and like that. We have the credit.
All right, so I just asked everyone to take a good look at these uh. Before the next meeting and we'll have it as an agenda item that discussed and hopefully uh, approved. So. All right. Thank you. Thank you, Becky.
Thank you, Becky.
You're welcome.
Okay, then moving on to uh. Item B, which is commission sharing related to training topics. So there you go. It seems like a nice little.
There was an email sent out about training wheels. That you sent.
I did, I sent one. Yeah, I sent you all a grant about. Pathways and trails and more suburban and rural communities. I think I also sent it to the parks board too. I, I feel like it would be really great.
I think too. I mean, it's applicable to the upcoming project. We're going to talk about how to handle. Crosscutters.
Yeah, I think they, they had two different dates to select from. There was uh, two, two different dates in November. So check your email. It's free. What's on my inbox?
You just sign right up. So I have a question. You mentioned emails. I just want to make. Is everyone here and Commissioner Ward? Are you getting the regular emails from the Michigan Association of Planning?
Yes.
Okay.
Emails? Yes.
Okay.
The MTA. No, no.
M A, M A P.
I get from the empty, the.
Townships Association.
MTA.
Okay.
But specific to planning.
Because you've all been signed up.
Letter by mail. But I can't say that I get email.
By being your junk too.
No, I check my junk or check my junk daily.
Every time there's a change.
I'll, I'll double check.
Yeah, and it goes to your township. That's why I had to do that. Every time we have a change, I update them. Now, maybe it doesn't go through, but you can.
Yeah, I'll check, but I'm sure I don't get anything from Dan.
Because you're sure, because that's all somewhere, they, all the training goes.
Yeah.
And the.
We don't get that, that's hit and miss. That's not regular. Like the MTA is pretty much.
M A P's two or three times above, especially like there's a two-day conference in November.
Yeah, I'll do.
And they've been sending it every few days.
Okay, I'll double check.
And one, one can attend virtually. So just make sure, because I'll.
Okay.
So we're still operating. Under, like, any of the township business goes through our Microsoft uh. Township emails?
Yes.
Well, not like that, that's teams. We don't use teams.
So we use like S D I L E at Saga Township down here.
That's through Outlook.
Yeah, Outlook, that's what I meant.
Yeah.
And if you go, it's very easy to get Outlook on yourself.
Yeah, yeah. So the. I just wanted to know where to look.
Yeah, that's for you.
So I, I frequently attended. Coastal Dunes, uh, presently three-part presentation. And they have a subsequent coming up, some trip one coming up November first. Where they are going to speak a topic of where they think the lake levels are going. Anybody who's longer the last couple of years has seen the water drop. Um, faster than I've ever seen the Great Lakes drop. And this is not just. Saugatuck River or Cali River, this is the Great Lakes. Um, have dropped um, from their highs quite quickly. Um, so I, I, I can't wait to hear what the expert today. They think it's going to happen next. Now, I'll have it for you at the next meeting. Because traditionally, it's been a thirty-year cycle.
Well, if last few years.
They keep it accelerated. If, if they keep dropping at the rate that it's dropping right now, um. It'll reverse.
And that would be, that'd be great if I, I did attend the first one as well. Uh, the, that second one, if you. I'm not planning on attending that one. I feel like I had a conflict, but if. If you're able to put something together just to educate us on some of the high points.
Yeah, I just, I want to, can, we have. Been in a drought situation through the Great Lakes, due to heavy rain. Uh, we have not had a lot of rain this um. Past week exception. Um. Okay. Yeah, I'd love to know what they think is going to happen with the Great Lakes basin, because. It's the whole basin. It's not just one area.
All right, so once anybody has anything else to add, we can, I, I think. High points ours, all training, uh, that, well, that is recommended. By the township that are forwarded to us is going to come through their, the township emails. And I'm going to review the bylaws and rules of procedure, but slightly we will add. A requirement for training for once per term. And then uh. You know, there's a bunch of training opportunities out there. Does anybody else have anything and regarding training? All right, thank you. Now, on the item C, officer elections. Uh, so we have uh, three positions that need to be renewed. Uh, Ms. Israel's was our uh. Uh, our chair or kind of our, our chair, I, I filled in after, uh, because I was vice chair and I moved over to chair after uh. Becky getting to uh, the board. I have a position on the township board. And Ms. Webster is a, uh. Our secretary at this point, but our terms are all up, as John has mentioned.
They were up.
So at this point, we would like to uh. Up with uh, renew. Or actually fill those positions for the next uh, term. And that's. Remind me how long.
Well, it'll go through June of next year. So it's a short little term to get in sync with the fiscal year.
So, so you'll be in this position until you. Stretch. So. So anyways, there are uh, three positions, as I said, there's chair, vice chair and secretary. So.
Secretary has become somewhat, um. Since we now have somebody who's taking the minutes, it's more of a title.
And as a secretary, but as I think as tonight shown, we, Denise actually had to fill a role that, so, I mean, it's. She had to step in as.
It requires.
Right, so. Uh, but it is nice for the secretary to actually be able to be in the meeting and.
Well, again, if you look at, if we take these bylaws, it says the secretary uh, may call the role instead of the chairperson calling the role. Uh, and then they, you, you do sign, sign certain documents and so forth. So. Know that you're right. The secretary is not sitting here and listening and writing down everything. Absolutely. They're not taking the minutes. Um, but they are still responsible for making sure the minutes are conducted and that anything needs to be signed. Um. I know in some municipalities, they, they have to sign uh, the site plan. I don't know whether, we don't do that here. But I know, so um. Again, difference might also be that the secretary now is calling role rather than the chairperson.
The new change.
Educated there, so. The answer that whoever's. Is there a slate of officers?
Well, I was going to make a motion. To ask, that is a slight, because we can do this in one motion. So let me try this. I would like to make a motion that we appoint Commissioner Ily to be our new chair of the planning commission. And that we appoint Commissioner Brown to be our new vice chair. And that we reappoint a secretary. Commissioner Webster.
Second, second. All right, is there any discussion? Is there anyone else who's? Look at that. I didn't think.
I guess, are you all willing? Are you all ready?
All right, well, I guess at this point.
Uh, can we just do it by uh, uh, voice?
Sure.
We have to. We have to do it by rule.
I would think rule.
Rule call, okay. All right.
It's.
Well, I don't know if you want it. We haven't really adopted that yet, but I'll. I can.
My surprise is.
Thank you very much. Uh, Commissioner Stanis.
Yes.
Commissioner Ily.
Yes.
Commissioner Brown, yes. Commissioner Henry.
Yes, Helmrick.
Helmrick, I know, I'm going to get it one of these days. Commissioner Butler.
Yes.
Commissioner Webster, yes. What a passage.
And I mean, I'd like to just, sorry to do this, but I've done this in the board meetings too. When motions are voted, are made and voted on, and it's a roll call. You're supposed to call first, the person who made the motion, second, to the person that supported. Just.
Is it, we got a Robert's rules? Honestly, I, I'm asking that.
I don't know.
I've never, I've never heard that before.
Really? Oh, yeah. I mean, I've heard it a lot. I've always heard it that way, but the other thing that's interesting is that. Just because you made the motion or supported the motion, you do not have to vote yet.
Right.
Correct, correct.
Motions are often made by.
I know we've done it.
Just wanted to vote.
Yeah, I've done it.
That way it's been passed. All right, that's just a little. Not a point of order.
Okay.
All right.
Uh, it's those, you know, those little things we can correct.
Yeah.
Uh, to make it appropriate. Yeah, you can do that.
And it's not required, but it's suggested, and we've always done this, as far as I know in the township. To swear in the offices. So if you want to drop by the office.
Oh, yes.
And there are four people that can swear you in. Clerk Israel, Deputy Clerk.
I know it was sworn as a commissioner, but.
Deputy Clerk Babinski and myself and Babinski again, because we're, we are no reason. Try to do it before the next. Be fun.
Suggested now, right on. All right, so then moving on to uh, number eight, uh, the report. So number A is, the letter A, I'm sorry, is Township Board update, Mr. Helmrick?
Sure. So the board met on October twelfth. Um, we had some interesting public comment, County Commissioner. I think I spoke on disaster preparedness training in the county. Uh, also the move to preserve the Alleghen Dam, because some suggesting removing the dam. Uh, and talked about new funds that have been released for COVID-related psychological issues uh, with children. Bobby Gaunt, who's chair of the Saugatuck Dunes Coastal Alliance, spoke in favor. Of a township resolution being adopted opposing the Marina sand removal in the Patnose property. To share with both Eagle and the US Army Corps of Engineers. And then County Commissioner candidate, uh, Don Dogendorf introduced himself self and shared his priorities. Because that is this. Our county commissioner is on the ballot in two weeks. Uh, board then acknowledged receipt of fifty-plus letters and emails. That were submitted in opposition to the Marina, I just mentioned in the North Shore Development, the Patnose property. And a request that township adopt a resolution opposing the plans. That was acknowledged with correspondence. As part of the consent agenda, the board approved a three-year renewal of the cemetery agreement that Douglas. This commits Douglas to sharing in the cost of cemetery maintenance. And in return, Douglas residents receive the in-district rate. That we get in the township. Just to get burial plots or cremation. The township board approved the first quarter budget amendment. Quarterly review of the budget for necessary amendments is required by the township's financial policy. It's just some little tweaks moving things around. Uh, board discussed an invitation from the Saugatuck Douglas Convention Visitors Bureau to extend a guest membership. To the township on the C V V's Board of Directors. They also sent this request to the two cities to attend. And I believe that first meeting happened this weekend, all three managers attended it. And. I'm hearing that part of what they want to talk about is some alliances, because. They've received some money that they could maybe share with three municipalities, for certain pro tourist. Is the hospitality business transactions. Uh, Judge Herr Helberg, yeah, I shared, I gave my quarterly update on the township's financial investment holdings. Which now, just so you're aware, we have ten different products accounts totaling three point three million dollars invested. Um, on behalf of the township. And when we. Their office, we had seven hundred and fifty thousand. So we've been a lot more aggressive. In the investment front. Uh, and now we meet, the next meeting is November ninth, the day of the election. So, any questions? In the investment front. Uh and now we meet, the next meeting is November ninth, the day of the election. So any questions? Thank you for listening.
Alright, Township Planning update.
Alright, um, thank you very much. I just wanted to mention first off. Um I think we talked at the last meeting about jars and how they're able to do a more minor parking expansion. In accordance with our administrative approvals. Um Top Grade did email today, they have um two different options for. The clay liner that they're proposing to install, whether the clay is from their property. Or they import clay from um Holland, from the battery plant that's going in and Holland. Um they wanted my input on that before they submit one or the other and I'm just uh. Um I'm, I'm gonna be talking to the township engineer about that. Um bringing clay in, they said in their email is about four hundred and fifty truck trips. Versus clay on site, which um results in a lot of tree removal and. Kind of really changing the the wood character of the property. So I haven't really dug into it, it just arrived today. But I know you've had all been asking about Top Grade. They do intend to submit for the December meeting. They submit in November or December.
A month, cause we were hoping that they were gonna be in the November meeting, so they're asking for. It's in December.
Yeah, yeah. We do have two big items on the agenda already for November. Not including the bylaws, um but one is Holland Hospital, a medical clinic. It's proposed on Blue Star, um just uh near kind of spectators and the big beat, right? That that area.
I think it's actually right next door to Jim.
Okay, right next to the gym, sorry, I'm off. You guys know this area. I think it's like thirty five, under it is the other.
Between the gym and the uh memorial.
Yeah.
Yes. It's a slice of that big, huge area that Joe Milwaukee sold.
Yeah, and then um, yeah, it's just adjacent gym. And then um Auto Camp, okay, Auto Camp, so that's a rezoning. Some land from R one to C one, and then it's also they want you to consider their special approval use. And with that one, again, it's a concept land, like um they don't have all the full site plan stuff. Where is that again? That is across the, well, just south. Just south of the brewery.
Take it out and then this property.
So we'll have two public hearings.
Two public hearings for the.
One is for the rezoning.
One is for.
And then if that passes.
Well, it's a recommendation, so you still have to hear the special use.
Recommendation to the board?
Rezonings are recommendations.
So we would, even though, let's say we would deny that rezoning, we would still have to have a public hearing associated with their site plan.
With their special use, yeah.
Yeah, especially you, I'm sorry.
Yeah, um. Yeah, they pulled everything, I just didn't notice today. Yeah, everything has renoticed. Um, those are big items for one agenda. And then um the other thing I wanted to talk to you about, and we can discuss more at the next meeting. But maybe in next year, moving the meeting date, uh day of the week. We had talked once about going to Tuesdays. Because I'm here already on Tuesdays and I would just stay through. Um and I'm wondering if we could look at either the, like ideally the third Tuesday. You all could look at that versus support.
I feel like we talked about that and you were to think about.
I was and looked at, I did, and now I have a proposal. Same, same time.
Can you remind me what Top Grade is?
Yeah, Top Grade is a sand mining operation on old Alington. Um so they had. Yeah, it was an approved special use for mining. Um it it the use expired, but they have not restored the site the way that they promised. So we have given them the opportunity to modify their restoration plan. Because not only did they not restore it, but they actually did not do everything that they thought they were gonna do with the mining. Um.
Is this done by the golf course?
It's behind, yes, it is. They would actually take water drainage and water from the ravines to fill the pond that they.
Yeah.
Yeah. So um, so anyway, Top Grade in in December, and I'm happy to talk to you about it. Or we can get you minutes from past meetings, it's been postponed. Because they've come back now a few times with more information that we've asked for. So it will be important for me to make sure that you have a lot of that background too.
So. Um I just get the feeling that we're just giving them for lead time. If we had the discussion that they were ready to have the materials to us this month. For the next month and now they wait till the day of the meeting. To send an email, I just don't think that's sufficient.
Oh, well, what would be our recourse? I mean, we would say, okay, they have it December, but if they have no more chances, well, then what happens?
I mean, that's what's the the hard part, right? And so we started enforcing um. And and we enforce the plan that we've heard that a lot of neighbors don't. Want them to go to the water table and to, you know, continue to excavate. So it is a tough position. We have been emailing them regularly, checking in. I know they've said that their consultants are all very busy. I know as a consultant. In my world, we're we're busy. I don't know about, you know, the environmental firms, but I can imagine that. I can imagine that to be true, but.
I would agree, Commissioner Butler, is that if we give them one more chance. But come December, if they don't have anything, then what is our next recourse?
I I think I'd like to see something from LeVey, and if she needs to speak with our, our board council. That um e- either we have a plan. And something that we're gonna refer to our engineers as is viable and or sanctions will begin on this date. Uh and they will take the form of whether financial or injunction. Um but just, it just feels like they keep kicking this can and I think um. It's, I think that the fact that they waited till today to let her know. Uh really speaks to what their intention is.
Discussion that we have in November, I suppose. Yeah, uh you know, since, since we've just been informed of this, I I'd like to take a moment to think of more. Directly this, I, you know, you're right, I I I agree in some, in part, but if we. Do we need to give them the opportunity and then speak to the the township, uh all of the board and everybody? Because there may be something financially that's gonna be part of of our decision now.
But again, though.
There is more.
It's been ongoing for two years. The first major hearing on the reclamation plan was during the lockdown, it's all on Zoom. Then a few months ago, they were here in person. I mean, I'd like to be reminded of the actual dates, but I think it's been two years or more. And then there's these huge gaps for the state communication.
Well, they mean, they they asked, they asked for the large gap because all the, all the advisors were so busy. So we gave them three months.
Yeah, oh, we did.
And so, so then they wake up today to say, oh, we need another month.
So therefore today, are you making a use of signature that we, and next month, they're not in front of us? That we move forward to whatever is the next step? I mean, we did give them until November, but they missed that.
Well, I think we should wait until December.
Well, I agree, I think we should.
So this time we get delayed because of our.
In December and they don't present whatever in December, then we move to the next step, not now or.
Yeah, I just, we do review it November, and I'd also like to know what enforcement really means.
Yes.
You know, does that, uh what are our, cause.
Someone else coming and doing the work.
I I really think we need to think about that and whether that's what what's going to happen, again, their track, their track record is not good, so. Uh if I were betting person, I would say seventy-five percent sure, but we're not gonna see it in December. Are we ready to take the next step?
Well, you see, I I don't want them to present something that we could do this or what, we could do that. What do you guys think we should do?
Because they're aware of that in December, we want a plan.
Well, I wouldn't go to December, I think they were supposed to have it to us for the November meeting. Um so. I I would say it's gotta be in our hands at the next meeting, we start taking enforcement.
But if it was never, I mean, we're at a point where, let's say they don't come to the November meeting, let's say they don't come to the December meeting. We've never, we never took action on it, so couldn't they just? So we postponed it, so that is considered action where I'm just wondering, could they come back in?
And we did say, and we asked them about, and come to the November meeting.
Yeah, we we gave them all that time to get everything put together and they were supposed to have it between Lanay. Um so she could uh say, this is what's going to be in your November packet, and they have not done that.
I would suggest that we put that on the agenda for further discussion. Uh and and whether in fact we wish to move forward, since again, we, November. Put it on the agenda and and a further discussion, we need to all think about that as well as what does this mean? What does this mean?
Other thing that should, I I don't mind, you know, putting, I don't, doing that, but I think it also, Top Grade should be. Made aware that we're discussing it as well.
Yeah, I guess I just, I I I don't know that I'm prepared to talk about this at this level here. I did email them the day that the packet, that the submittals were due. I said, I don't have your anything, are you intending to submit um for, in the November window for the December meeting? And because I don't have anything today, and they said that they were. And then that was what last week, I think, the packet, this middle deadline was last week. So then today, they sent the email saying that they have these two different options. And wanted to know which one, for me, wanted to know which one to move forward with, and I'm not gonna be able to tell them that. That's not a position that I can take. They need to utilize their experts and present something.
Correct.
That meets, you know, all the comment that they've heard, the ordinance requirements, state law, whatever. That's on them to to submit to me, not, I'm not making a decision, and and I will say that to them.
I I would agree, I would, I would support that. I don't think it's, it's our decision, is, they know what needs to be done, how they get to to do it.
So I I mean, I don't know that. I understand the desire to hold them to the November meeting, I'm just saying that we don't have materials. And I think that's the deadline, and they intend to submit on time for the December.
And if then November deadline's passed.
November deadline is passed.
That's. Well, Merry Christmas, folks, it could be fun in December. You want to moving the date to the. Do you wanna to consider that like sooner than later?
That would be great. I mean, if 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 anyone has any big issues with that. Um I do put out the annual meeting schedule, and somebody has asked when the meetings are in January. And I said, well, I still need to talk to the planning commission, we might be adjusting it. But I don't wanna just throw it on you and you make a decision right now either.
So this is the November meeting, the November meeting, put on the agenda for, for, cause is that what we decide? When our dates for the next year?
We could do that in November, we can prepare that for you.
So the November meeting currently is the Monday right after Thanksgiving weekend, correct?
Yeah, twenty eighth.
Everybody should look at their calendars and think about it, but I wouldn't suspect, I mean.
And then I think we all like the idea.
And the December meeting is twelfth, the twelfth, right?
Yes, it is the twelfth.
It is the twelfth, so we won't be at the twelve days of Christmas yet.
So.
Yes, they do.
Wow, okay.
I think they need to be aware, make sure that they're aware of that.
If we voted next month to go to the Tuesday.
That would start in twenty.
Yeah, that makes a lot of sense. Thank you.
Yeah, yeah, so just let me know.
Yeah.
Uh if if, I mean, I guess if I don't hear from you, I'll assume that it works.
Well, it just makes sense to hear why.
It's just a different week, though, and I I know everybody has a life, but you're volunteers, so I wanna make sure it works.
Uh so let me, I just for clarification, what's gonna happen with jars? Because what did we do with that particular one? Did we postpone that?
We did, but um she withdrew it via email, so I don't, we don't need to do anything other than. I have the record that it was withdrawn.
Okay, so that it's in our minute, uh so that we could, we have that in our record that it, there, you know, I can discard this.
She can discard and we'll make sure that's in the minutes.
Paper recycling box.
And what's about best buds? What's going on with that?
Best buds, yeah, that's.
That's getting, that's getting lengthy in regards.
So if Best Buds doesn't submit um anything within a year.
Getting close, right?
Yes, so I am emailing, there's, we have another uh grow facility. That is no longer maintaining a license with the state, so I also have to send them a letter. Um because I don't know that they're gonna open again. That's a DC consulting, it was, they were in. Yeah, the Affect Nato.
Oh, yeah, didn't we also approve another one in that area?
We did.
And L B, but one has ceased to exist and the other one is cooperating, okay?
Still building, it seems to.
Well, that's, that's a Cindy enforcement thing. That's like a building code enforcement that.
And then they, what was the name, is that what we just?
Best buds, um like they haven't submitted anything to us.
Said the couple from Pendle, said the one, yes, Mary Mendoza. Yes, sorry, okay, I should I get a hold on to this one.
What date was?
I don't have. January twenty fourth, it's coming up.
Yeah, I'm gonna send her an email. I mean, it's not my. They need to track their own stuff, but as a courtesy, I will email them.
Because anywhere if, does that just automatically cease, do they?
I'm gonna look into that uh because, and I wanna make sure that our township attorney is on board with whatever we do. I'd like it to be official because with all of these, it it just is a better, you know, track record and. Filing and especially with Canvas facilities, like it's new for everybody, which is why I wanna make sure that we're consulting.
Alright, thank you.
Yeah.
I guess it's one quick note, we did have a meeting on the uh the Saga Tuck Township, the this, the uh, you're you're all aware that we uh. Maybe for us, but we uh we hired and a uh consultant to uh redo our ordinances and. Our zoning and I go through our, basically all the township uh. Data here, and so we had our first, first meeting uh with the consultant after he kind of. Put together a plan of attack and I thought it went really well. Uh we're all pretty excited about it, so there is, I don't know, is this available to? So, so yeah, this is in your packet, so uh please uh, you know, read through it and take a look, there's a lot of good stuff in there. Uh obviously, anybody has any suggestions, comments, we're uh, we're more than welcome, you know, more than willing to listen. And that, cause this is our, it's our big shot right here, so.
So is that his advice on moving forward and changes in his speed? So you have to approve this and then move forward?
No, we didn't have to, this is just for you all, just the, the follow along.
Well, hey, in regard to what you, is this right on track?
Oh, yeah, yeah. It's a really, thanks for asking, yeah, it's, it was good.
So is this in audits?
So he. Really good question, so we already, he did a proposal and we hired him, so what he did is audit it, our current ordinance. To say, these are some big things that we're seeing, that he's seeing that needs to be changed. A really good question, so we already, he did a proposal, and we hired him, so what he did is audit it, our current ordinance, to say, these are some big things that we're seeing, that he's seeing that needs to be changed. Staff also has a three-page, uh, three pages of things to change in the ordinance. So this, and he's also sharing how the document would be organized, so the outline, uh, the formatting, uh, so that he can start doing that work instead of us in doing it, and then we see it, we're like, oh, we don't like that color, we don't like the order of the outline, like, this is us saying, like, move forward this way, yeah.
You know, you know, two things, especially since our, we've just had this is, there's nothing about breweries or wineries.
He mentions that in the narrative, yeah.
And whether that should be on this list, as well as food trucks.
I think it.
I didn't see that, I didn't see that, but it doesn't mean it.
Okay. We pointed out a couple other ones too.
Yeah, okay. I, I just happened to know.
Yes, maybe food trucks, yeah, that's a good.
And I know that, um, South Haven or somebody, uh, there's some issue with your food trucks, it's in the.
South, South Haven.
Yes.
They just did a new ordinance.
Yes.
So if we're silent, but yet we do have businesses that have food trucks, that will sell in the town.
Like a temporary.
Where, where are they at?
Doing Squid View and also, uh, New Standard Marijuana Retail.
Food production?
Yeah, they did several Thursdays, I think.
And we have a temporary use permit for that kind of thing.
Favor, yeah, alright, okay, alright, thank you, everybody.
Thank you.